All right, it is March thirteenth and it's it is like six oh one and I'm calling the Grotton Board of Education Committee as a full meeting to order. The first item on the agenda is the review of the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes. And that should have been attached to your agenda. And I will take a motion for acceptance.
Bill moved.
Liz? Please.
Second.
I have William seconding it. Do we have a do we have any discussion? All right, here and then, all those in favor of the approval of the December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain that motion has carried. Um, so as Susan and I have promised, we were really kind of doling out. This is for the board, we were really kind of doling out what we, what was going to be easy to kind of put together or the information that we had together. Um, there's lots of other stuff, and I think you've mentioned that in your board notes as well.
And I said to board members to let us know, let you know if there is something that we missed for the kind of near future that we didn't put down, but we did go through our notes just to remember, recall what board members had requested.
And talking about doing that before December of two thousand and twenty-two, that seems like a lifetime ago. Um, so, um, but one of the things that when Susan and I were talking, we realized that the agenda item of being four are really kind of kind of closely related. There's some synergy to that. And so, since we had that conversation around the policy, we thought that we would just have a little bit, give a little bit more meat so that when we go through the policy again, we can have some understanding of it. And I think we all got the conversation with the email from Miranda, who talked about her view of the graduation requirements in terms of a military liaison. Um, and so
Might even be here on the phone.
Miranda, is that you on the phone? Okay, so that would not be true. Okay, and just also to let the board know, I, if I get into a little bit of a coffee jag, I am passing the baton over to Andrea, who's on on the left line on standby. I should be fine, but just in case that happens, I want to make sure that our are all of our, it's all covered. Um, I am, we are lucky here to have some really great people, not only on Zoom, but also in the room with us to talk about the IB NYPD grade six through ten in career program. So Susan and I am going to pass it over to you who to set this
So here at Central Office, I have all four of the Fitch High School administrative team right here. So thank you very much for being here. So Ted and Matt and Carmita and Adam are all here with us. Um, I also see on the screen Kathy Wilson, who really oversees NYPD six through ten. And Ann Keith Probotnik, who has spearheaded the career program, getting that up in Adam and also doing the NYPD personal project. And I have to tell you, I've been putting it in board notes and I tried to get you video clips because the kids say it so much better than I do. But between the NYPD personal project experience that I got to experience and some of the board members did too. And the kinds of things that the students were saying about this being a passion project and that choice and voice is so important to them and you know, they really, really, um, and I'm not going to take away Anne and Kathy's thunder, but they really, really appreciate it. And these were students, it's not a requirement this year, it will be next year, but these were students who really went ahead and completed the project on their own. And kind of, um, they were kind of our experiment case and they did an awesome job. And then this morning I had the opportunity to do the IB breakfast. So we talked about the IB diploma program, Kelly was there. Um, and then we also talked about the career program. I think there were students interested in both, really equally interested. So they had some great questions and we had a good discussion. Um, you know, Ted really led the way, um, kind of informing parents and students who were there at the breakfast about the IB program. So you know, it's been really exciting, I would say, as we grow that because I think that um, you know, we promised to double the numbers. Well, we may have tripled the number. So we'll see what happens when they go to find out, but it's very exciting. So I'm going to turn it over to Kathy. If you want to start with the IB NYPD. I know you sent a slideshow and I embedded it in board notes, but I think this should be just a night where we can casually talk about it and we can answer questions from the board. So it can be more like a discussion.
Well, now that I'm in the fifth year of this, I think I can talk to it. We've seen so much improvement, even with COVID, right in the middle of it, in the instruction, in the students understanding that they're in the, um, they are the reason that we have these classes and they're doing the learning while the teachers are planning really hard ahead of time and facilitating the learning. I've seen some great classes, a Socratic seminar. That personal project was fantastic and those kids were just amazing and they, they're probably for, for the fourth year of NYPD, they probably had four years of NYPD before adventuring into that. And that, that personal project is really the culmination of all of the skills that the teachers taught them through these last four years. And it's just, it's really coming to, we're really becoming an IB campus now.
So Kathy, could you help me out? Um, could you give us a little historical background about the campus concept and also what is NYPD? And why as a, an educational professional as yourself? Um, and for those people who are here, why are you excited about the NYPD and what, what does it do for Grotton and its kids?
The historical background is IB has been part of the high school for over twenty years now. Spearheaded by Kelly Donovan and they've, they have what's called the diploma program and the diploma program is very structured. It has its own curriculum. They have e-assessments that are graded outside of the school. Whereas the middle years program came after the diploma program and it involves every student six through ten. And the, the basis behind all international back laureate programs is those ten learner profile traits that are everything that we want our students to be able to do when they leave school. And you know, be principled, be knowledgeable, be open-minded, be risk takers, you know, um, there's, there's ten of them. I should have them memorized, but I don't.
You're right in front of me.
We work very, very hard at trying to make sure that our students have those traits embedded in them before they leave for the high school and in the NYPD. Um, we started NYPD in two thousand and eighteen and the teachers have worked incredibly hard at learning how to do the unit plans because they're very specific. And they include a lot of different things like approaches to learning skills. Um, uh, summative assessments that are measured through criteria that is set up by the International Back Laureate. And they're, uh, they're working on getting up a community project at the middle school. We're going to start working on that this spring and hopefully get something started for next year. And that leads into the personal project that Anne spearheaded this year.
I think one of the very important things that Principal Kelleher said to the kids today is that they're all ready for AP, IB and ECE because of the floor that we built, the foundation of NYPD. Would you like to speak to that because you said it so well?
Yeah, I think that, uh, you know, that we really try to talk a lot about the myths that, that are out there about the IB program. And, you know, we have students that, uh, that, you know, have all different types of goals coming up at Fitch High School. You know, we have students that obviously want to go into military, the college, they want to go into a career. The nice thing about the NYPD program, it, it prepares our students for anything that they want to do going forward. Um, you know, we have students that really want to go into IB diploma. That's great. We, we want to support them with that. We have students that want to take just some IB classes, you know, they, they'd like to try a few, but they don't want to do the full diploma. That's okay, too. We have students that want to go into the, uh, the CP program. We're already getting a lot of interest there as well.
The program?
The career program, uh, the new career program, either nursing, engineering or our business. Um, and then we have students that may want to be interested in the military and the new N, NDCC program. No matter what the students want to do, the, the NYPD program is a way of preparing them for whatever they're going to take. So if a student says, you know what? I'm not really interested in IB. I would like to take AP. That's okay. That's, there's nothing wrong with that. And, and you know, we want to make sure that our students coming from such diverse backgrounds that they come from, that we have the diversity to meet those needs. And so the NYPD really meets all of those things by preparing them for whatever they want to take. And so our students today, you know, we talked to them and said, you know, you might be interested in a full diploma program or you might want to just try to take a few, a few IB courses. Whatever you want is where, you know, that's where we want you to go. So it's, uh, it's something where, uh, you know, we, like we said, students says, well, I'm not going to be an IB student. You already are an IB student. You're, you're already taking IB level coursework in the class that you're already in. Um, and so it's something where, uh, you know, I think we're, we're taking a lot of pride that that those courses are preparing for students to take whatever they want to take in their junior and senior.
I think when we crafted the policy on really having students be the drivers of their own success and they would be the ones who would have the desire to take the higher level courses. Um, I think we really were kind of very progressive. This board was very progressive in laying that foundation, but knowing that the foundation is really in that NYPD and also what's happening in the elementarys as well. But Carmita, I always give you such credit of listening to the students, the students in the Black Student Union, the students in More Than Words who said, why don't more kids like me take these courses? So I think that that's really another driver of our sense of urgency in this that, you know, we feel like this is the kind of background they need to be able to do, like you said, Ted. Whatever is they want to do. And we certainly saw that in one year's time, we were able to double the number in some classes of kids taking those courses. And it's definitely more diverse. I looked around the room and who showed up for the NYPD breakfast. I couldn't have been more pleased. It was an awesome group of kids. So.
So Goal is really creating independent learners. So if we can create independent learners, then they can do any job, even if it hasn't been invented yet.
That's true. Did you want to speak at all to how the assessment looks a little different as well? And even some of the grading that we're going to be going into looking, um, you know, uh, so that they're really doing tasks like reading and researching and then writing big time.
Yeah, analyzing, communicating, critical thinking, all of those things. We're, um, the summative assessments can be exams, but they need to be real world connected. And, um, but they also include things like essays and debates and video blogs and interviews. Um, skits, um, everything, the Socratic seminars are a really great way to get kids doing more work than the teacher. Um, it's just, uh, it's amazing when you walk into like a, a 10th grade class. I, I walked into Rick Peca's 10th grade Socratic seminar and he spoke very little and they spoke a lot and they were well-prepared and they, they knew the literature that they were required to read and it was just amazing. It made you feel like, okay, wow, this education thing is working.
One thing I, I want to add to that, one thing that's been nice about, uh, just that NYPD in general is with the common unit planners. It's nice to go into Sorry. Uh, it's nice to get into different classrooms and actually see the same themes and the same concepts being taught by different teachers, but at the same time. Um, and that's one thing that, that I think that this has helped us is when, when the, the staff has gotten time to, uh, plan together and develop these unit plans, we have more consistency with, with the same things being taught in those classes. And then having opportunities to give the same type of assessments and then calibrate their grading, uh, going together, you know, looking at the rubric, but not just grading it through the rubric, also comparing how uh, one teacher grades it compared to another so that we, we know that they're getting common learning experiences and expectations. I think is, is been a real, real benefit of, of NYPD.
Yep, the collaboration piece is very huge.
Can I speak to, um, the training Kathy? That the social studies teachers went to in December. And I, I, as a former certain coordinator and department chair of social studies, was so proud that, uh, we had teachers to attend the training in Washington DC that were a little reluctant in the beginning when we started in NYPD. And they were on board and now they've taken the lead. And, um, we worked with the unit planners and talking to the other department members who weren't able to attend. And then the world language teachers who also attend were trained. And I think ID offers the best training as, 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 um, uh, and teaching teachers on what to do and exactly what to do and walking us through the unit planners and helping us understanding the content of NYPD.
Very comprehensive.
Yep.
Kim?
So I guess we should have
Liz?
Yeah, I, as you know, I am, my heart and soul goes with the NYPD and the IB programs. I just want to ask, this is really, I kind of know the answer to this question, but this is mostly for those who are listening. Um, what about parents? What are you doing to keep them in the loop to, to instruct them and how this has changed the way education is being, you know, driven, you know, how this is benefiting their kids? Um, so how are you communicating that to your, our families, especially our middle school and early high school? Because, you know, that six through 10 especially and how it's going to prepare them. I heard about your NYPD breakfast here, but you know, a lot of people can't attend things like that. What are you doing to help educate our families?
Right. We have, um, had ongoing communications with parents, the webpage, the videos that we've made. Um, all kinds of things like that, but I agree that needs to be almost like a word. Um, a word of mouth for the parents and what, um, I think Phil and Chelsea Courtwright organized a training for the guidance counselors at the high school because they talk to the kids and they tell them, you know, they, they give them suggestions on where they should go and you know, what they should study and what classes they should take and they listen to their interests. And I think that's going to be a big push forward because now they are equipped with the knowledge to be able to talk not only to the parents, but also to help the students and, um, they understand IB, you know, I'm hoping equally as well as AP now. That's a big
How about Kathy? I know that, um, last year at the open house or at the conferences that the whole middle school kind of turned into a, uh, kind of an exhibit of what NYPD is. Do you know if anything like that has been planned for this year?
Uh, I don't. Um, right now, what we, we created two program development goals that were important for IB and one was measuring all four criteria twice this year. We do report that out to parents with a, a letter and then also um, they get a grade on their report card in the notes section, but we haven't really figured out how we're going to report NYPD grades. They're standardized and they're based on growth and they're not averaged in and it doesn't really match up with Power School right now, but we're, we're working on that and how we're going to do that. Um, but, um, the, the other, that was one program development goal. And the other one was getting the interdisciplinary unit out. If we can fully accomplish that, then that might be a chance to do an exhibit in the cafeteria or something at Grotton Middle School. Um, uh, the personal project is a major exhibit to get the word out. Um, if people that were not, that didn't have students there. Um, showed up and saw it, then that maybe they would encourage their kids. I think next year Anne um, has talked about bringing the eighth graders up too, to see, or, or maybe we should bring the personal projects from this year down to the eighth grade level and have an exhibit there. That would be really great for them to see
We actually
created.
Kathy, I don't want to cut you off, but we did talk about that on Friday as possibly a way to maybe bring it down to the middle school and let the kids walk through what we walked through last week because it, it was pretty impressive. And I think the kids would get pretty excited to see what their, what their, uh, not their classmates, but what the 10th graders were really doing.
Okay.
And, and other ideas we tossed around too was I think when we have the IB graduation at the end of the year, I think that should be open to um, parents to come and see what the final product is. Um, because that was, that's always incredibly impressive and, and up to this point, from what I could tell, it's usually just the kids and their, and their family members there. So maybe thinking about a way that we can open that up so people can, can see the end result.
Can I, can I?
In the high school.
Can I add in?
Yeah.
I was, I just had this thought. One of the associations I work with is National History Day. And what they do is they put up snippets like of three to five minute tutorials on how to do certain things. And maybe with, you know, our technology department, we could connect there and we can, you could produce some sort of tutorials about NYPD, about the personal project, you know, things that people can go to and load them on our webpage. It's just, I just had that idea, thought I'd share it.
Thank you, Liz.
I think one last thing, just getting as many parents as possible to, to get linked to Schoology at the high school and then Google Classroom at the middle school. Um, because on Schoology, if parents can see what's on those pages, we have it set in a uniform way where each, each, each week has a red folder and, and everything's placed there by the teachers, but to actually see the assignments that are given. Um, is a valuable thing. So the more and more we get parents to, uh, link to Schoology, um, just to see, to see the units and so forth. More on the ground, but.
Kathy, did you want to mention the community projects that, um, middle schoolers are involved in?
Well, they are not, I don't, I'm not aware of all of the community projects right now. They're all separate and outside of, um, like my domain right now, but we have four teachers trained in it. And so we want to bring them together and start, you know, brainstorming what that would look like. How many of the eighth graders we could get involved in it, the skills that they're going to need to accomplish it. And it, with IB, it's not required before, if we have the personal project, then the community project is not required, but it's really important for them to get those skills. So, um, it would be nice if they did it. And I think a lot of teachers would like to see
Yeah. So it's a work in progress.
Yes.
And I think a lot of, um, folks have asked us, what kind of community service do our kids have? What kind of volunteerism do they have? So I think that would tie in nicely to that, too. So.
Definitely.
Do we have any other questions about NYPD before we move to CP? Um, Kathy, I have a, a, just a follow-up question to one of your earlier comments. I think it's in regards to, um, so NYPD next year, everyone is going to need to do a, a project?
A personal project in, in grade, uh, grade 10, which is level five.
And that's a graduation requirement. That counts for one of the credits. Right. That we're, we've reduced, um, the FAS and global citizenship to one semester course. So that will be preparation and readiness, but that won't be the only way that they could get ready. We're prepared if kids come in later, if they've taken the NNDCC to have that preparation, but the idea of the NYPD personal project is that they take that task and really design it, create it on their own and then come to, you know, exhibit with it.
Susan, if I could address that a little bit more?
Thank you.
Um, so the students in the global citizenship class, that's usually their second semester freshman year. I developed five lessons that introduced the personal project because the personal project is really done outside of class time. It's an IB requirement, um, because we are an IB school. It is required by IB for all kids to do this. So, um, moving forward, we just had our Grotton Public Schools and IB, we are just aligning very nicely for all the work that both Ted and I have been pushing forward, forward for. So we're happy to see this change. So I start introducing the project with the kids and working with the GC teachers. And then in the summer I have put, actually I've put together an NYPD personal project group um, where the teachers can log in, where the students can log in. Um, since I don't personally teach GC, um, I get the information from Melissa in school counseling and I compile all the names of the students who should be there. I reach out. We really need to do a great job in encouraging our students to check their emails because that's the way the teachers communicate with them. Then come the fall of their sophomore year. Um, I've had an assembly, I've gone around to every CTO that's 10th grade and spoken with them, giving them hard copies, electronic copies of all the material that they need. And then I'm setting them up with mentors. So my goal for moving forward, after I reflected on all this, is I really want to start not only with the GC kids, their lessons, but really towards the end of the year, grabbing those teachers to become mentors. So maybe, you know, May, April, May, our faculty meetings or department meetings, I could really go in there, re-educate the teachers. What does it mean to be a mentor? What are your responsibilities? How can you get involved? And then hit it again in the fall because that's a really big piece um, of the students being successful, having that mentor. Throughout, probably since maybe November, all the way through the exhibit, I was meeting with the kids once a week if they wanted to come in. I stayed with them. I worked on them with them. I gave them some assignments. So I'm really trying to learn from what happened this year, which I'm so proud of all these kids. And then what can we build on and how to make it more inclusive? Because the, some of the things that I'm hearing from my colleagues is a lot of people don't know, okay, what is the NYPD project? Is it really required? Like, so I really want to get them educated. And so we're all more on the same page as we move forward. So I think if I start before school ends and then carry it over when school begins, you know, we'll have that, that, um, consistency a little bit more. But these kids did an awesome, awesome job and we are going to celebrate them on the underclassmen awards night in June. So.
And once we have, um, the final, you know, process of the policy done. Um, I think we need to send it out district wide to the class that it's going to involve, which are, are incoming freshmen. To really set the stage and we might plan for that eighth grade, um, day that they come or the night the parents come to really explain to the parents what this is all about. Um, so that the parents are aware.
Right, yeah.
So the other thing we talked about Anne was that we have a mentor program. I had talked about Jen Anthony. Um, you know, really spearheading this and Sharon Schick by her side. So we might find community members who are really particularly interested in mentoring students, especially if they have a common interest that happens to be that personal project. That's a perfect segue to have a mentor even outside the school, maybe in business that they're interested in. So, um, you know, that I would, we could encourage too. So whether it's our teachers, your superintendent becomes a mentor, you know, um, some of our board members might like to, and then there's other people in the community too. So.
Sounds like this is a good outreach to your elementary schools as well because it's going to be your sixth, your sixth graders who are going to need to be exposed to that. Right, right. So, and even just for parents. Um, because I mean, I think, I mean, there's some people who can say, oh, we're an NYPD, IB um, school district, but not quite sure what that means. And the more that we can kind of get people involved in that, I think the better it is.
Well, Kim, going back to what you just said and what Liz said earlier, and I'm not too familiar with this, but if we have a Facebook page, can we just have a Facebook page for IB or Facebook or Instagram? I mean, parent, I mean, I don't do any social media, but I know parents are, a lot of people are on social media. Um, and if we can use something like that, I don't know who the contact person would be. But like I had a student during the project who had his own Instagram account that he needed to connect to, to show his work. And that's how he gets his work done and, um, displays it and works with the community. So I think if we could do it, we can utilize social media. I know a lot of other schools that do that.
So we do have Rebecca Bayes, who is really, um, a great resource to us. So I think maybe we sit and meet with her, take some time to pick her brain a little bit about how we can grow this opportunity for families. And then Anne, would you like to tell us a little bit about the careers program?
Sure.
Here we are, getting ready to really launch it fully next year.
Yeah, we were authorized in June, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, and then things kind of got a little crazy. So we are going to launch it in the fall with, as Ted said earlier, with the nursing program, Project Lead the Way and business and tying the business into the Charter Oak Federal Credit Union because it's right there in the school, easy peasy, personal finance. So I have met with all the sophomores. Um, I held an assembly to talk to them about career-related programs. And if they had any interest, I know Kelly and Ted mentioned it today in the breakfast. And we're just trying to go out, I'm trying to get into all the CTO classes that I can to speak to the students to see what the interests are, who may be available to pursue this. My next task is to look at the Project Lead the Way students who have taken a Project Lead the Way class freshman and sophomore year so they could continue junior and senior. Because you're really for Project Lead the Way, you have to build on it. And you can't come in junior year with that. So that's my And you can't come in junior year with that. So that's my next step to work with Melissa in school counseling to see if I can pull that data. And then once I have that data, I can go ask those students if they're, this is something they're interested in. So we're excited to have it start. Kids are really curious about it. Um, we're moving forward with it. So the, the conversation's starting to happen and it's not only starting to happen among the teachers and the students, but among the students themselves. So I think that's a great way to have publicity when they speak it about to each other.
And really, we've talked about in, you know, going on into the future, almost any of those career pathways aligned to the I B instruction. Can make a career program. And so our new N N D C C, we had a student at the breakfast this morning. Who's interested in kind of engineering and maybe even military science. So, um, Ted was answering some of those questions. Um, we have the Ed Rising coming along to next year, so that could also be another service. Industry career.
Absolutely. The, the careers program can do nothing but growth. And, you know, so we're starting with what we have in place right now, but Anne's already been talking about different areas that we can go into. And, uh, you know, it's, it's just a matter of making sure that we have the connections that we need to have. Um, you know, when you think about an I B diploma student, an I B diploma student, you know, to, to make it simple. Basically takes six I B courses plus the, the, the theory of knowledge course. An I B career program student would take courses within that career study. Plus four I B courses, plus a personal and professional skills class that Anne has been developing. Um, and that personal professional skills class, uh, works on, you know. How to, how to function in the workplace, uh, you know, workplace ethics, things of that nature. But then also talks, uh, it does a community project, Anne, and then what's the last piece I'm forgetting?
Yeah, they do the service learning, which could be component of their C T E part, but they have to do a reflective project and that's the one that gets the. Yeah, that's the one that gets externally moderated by I B. So they look at an ethical dilemma within their industry. And they have to do some research on it, um, and come up with a paper. So again, that's also working with a mentor. And the service learning component is working with the mentor. But for the coming year, um, as Ted said, the P P S class, personal professional skills class, I'm going to incorporate all of that into the class. And then as the program grows, um, and we want to make sure we're doing this with fidelity and moving it forward. But as the program grows, you could definitely see many different avenues. And I just think it's another choice that the students have the opportunity to go into if they choose to. Either full diploma, C P, or they could do A P or, as Ted mentioned earlier, a combination of both. You know, we really need to, I think. Keep getting the word out to the students that these opportunities are here. Um, and not only if they do the career related program and they go into industry, great. If not. They could go to college and use all those skills that could help them later on for their whatever future career that they choose.
We also had the opportunity, we had some parents and lots of students there this morning. To talk about the importance of world language in an international baccalaureate, any of our international baccalaureate programs. M Y P, that's why we're adding the extra world language course. So now that is required for two world language. And we talked about how the seal of by literacy, um, we're going to be assessing all of our students, like in their junior, senior year. And any of our incoming native speakers, because this is a wonderful opportunity for as many students as possible to gain. Earn this seal of by literacy, which we know of, you know, equates to now currently nine credits. Um, college credits at Southern Connecticut and many other universities are also rewarding that. I actually have Kate Siriow, who oversees the seal of by literacy at the high school here. And we're going to talk about that some more during our, um, requirements for graduation, but that all ties in so nicely.
So, um, I have a question. So the career program is kind of like the diploma I B program. And that you don't really join it until your junior and senior year, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, that is correct. It's a junior, senior program, yes.
Okay, and my, what I hear from you is though, people might want to identify right now the three tracks, because that's what we have.
Yes.
We're hoping to expand it, but we have the three tracks, that they might want to identify that sooner than later.
Uh, yes.
There might be some classes that they're going to have to have in their possession. Is that the correct word?
Yes.
Their possession before they get into their junior year.
Yeah, so that's the great, um, thing about working with Chelsea Court, right? So every student is going to have a career pathway. And then when I work with Chelsea regarding just the I B portion of it. We can already see what the students are going to go, because they have to pick a pathway by the second semester or freshman year. So we can really, um, get to them earlier. If they choose to do the I B portion, the I B career related program. Yeah, so the career pathways will definitely be, um, a huge help to identify these students. To make sure that they get the proper prereqs. And right now, it's only Project Lead the Way. That is requiring those prereqs. Um, nursing is not, business is not, um, I could see if we go into education, I don't see that. Having any really big prereqs. It's really just Project Lead the Way and maybe another science, that would be my guess, um, at this. Mm-hmm.
William. And so, but, oh, I'm sorry, William.
So, uh, just a quick question about the, uh, the project mentors and, and even the career programs. Do we have, you know, partnerships with the businesses, nonprofits in our community? That would help us, you know, with the mentorship. So let's say, somebody's, you know, personal project, they want to do something related to healthcare. So we have seven community nurses that we, um, we use and, and we know that, and we have a schedule for them, you know. This one, you know, nurse can do it, uh, the first semester, uh, three other nurses can do it the second semester. You know, such that you have, you know, a list of who are your resources and what are our partnerships, you know, with, you know, say the. The Mystic Aquarium or Mystic Seaport or, I mean, we have so many, so many, we have such a. A, a great community with so many resources, even the naval base, you know. How can we use those resources and partner with them to make sure that we have the mentors that we need? All right, so somebody wants to go into medicine, but we have twelve community doctors that will be willing to be mentors, you know. And, you know, set up a schedule with them and things like that. It'd be great to have that, you know, kind of set so that you. Not always searching for somebody, but when somebody comes up to you and says, yeah, I really like athletics and, like I say, all right, great. So our athletic director is, you know, does not have anybody this semester, and so you can use them as your mentor, things like.
I think one of the things, the reason why, uh, Anne certainly can speak as well, with the careers program. Uh, we're starting with nursing and business and Project Lead the Way, is because those are areas where we actually do have some partnerships already. Um, so for example, the nursing program, they're already going out and doing clinicals, uh, to get ready for their nursing assessments, the, the C N A assessment. Uh, that they complete. Uh, as Anne said already, that, uh, with business, we already have a partnership with Charter Oak within the school. Now, does that mean that we're just going to sit on those? No, we want to continue expanding those. And I know Anne and Chelsea have done a lot of great work with that. And, uh, you know, and, and we continue to work on that. Um, but as we expand, we want to make sure that as we're opening up those first programs, that we want to make sure we had some stuff already in place. Uh, and in those programs we do, um, obviously we have, with engineering, there's a lot of, uh, programs out there and, and. Our, our programs, but businesses out there in the community that we are, we're going to tap into. And Project Lead the Way is the, is a fairly set curriculum in terms of what, what it is. So, um, yes, absolutely, but we're gonna, we're gonna need more. It's, it's going to be something we're going to have to continue to build.
Chelsea's actually already outreach, we have Electric Boat and they have several programs, Pfizer. And I think if I could bring Chelsea Courtwright and Jen Anthony together, um, with, there could be a lot of synergy there. So you kind of put that seed of thought in my head. Um, because, um, Jen Anthony is also working with Chamber of Commerce and other local. Um, you know, places of business to get mentoring through them. So I think that we're, you know, really rolling along the Karmita.
I just wanted to, um, just remind that we had that huge career council there last, last week. And General Dynamics and a bunch of community organizations here there. Um, not just the schools, you know, universities.
A lot of careers.
It was really intense.
We need to take advantage of that. We have so many.
Oh, man. They had a career day at E B, I guess. I was reading about it in the day, how many people came out for that.
I think, I think now that we have Jen Anthony and, as Ted said, I've been working with, um, Chelsea and also Melissa Manzoni. My, so my lens is, I want a solid foundation of my colleagues in my building. To have an understanding of what's going on. I would like a solid foundation of the Board of Ed to have an understanding of what's going on with the mentors that we take. Because we are going to need mentors, we should reach out to the communities, and I think that's a wonderful idea. But I think we can maybe do it in baby steps, or I'm not sure about simultaneously. I'm just a little afraid that if I start reaching out to industry. That they don't have any idea what the I B program is, and we have to go out and educate them. Um, on what it is and how does it benefit them? They're like, I have so much to do right now. How does a student with an I B education benefit me coming into industry? So we have to go out and present to the community. But I think the first step is in-house, we need to have a solid foundation of what is going on, why is it going on? What's beneficial about it? And then Chelsea and I could work with Jen Anthony and start to reach out to those three different areas as a starting point. Because I do, I think it takes, really does take a village to be successful in all this. It really does.
The parents and students having a really solid understanding as well.
Absolutely. And it's not easy. I B language is not easy. I teach a D P class. It took me a few years to understand the whole language regarding I B, because I felt like I was learning a new language. But you have to be, in, in my opinion, you have to be invested in it. We are an I B district. And, you know, we do offer a lot to the students, but we all need to do. So like if they saw Adam on the street. Adam would be able to have a conversation, which I know he can, about an I B education. So, you, you know, think about those little elevator pitches that we need to continuously do. Um, to promote these programs and not only I B, because I, I, a lot of kids benefit from the A P classes. I mean, there's nothing for that discipline.
And E C.
Yes, everything, right? So it's really about the students. It really is.
I think that's a big reason why, you know, we've done the program of studies night this year. We did the, uh, this I B breakfast was a smaller event. Uh, you know, the taste of I B was a fantastic event that, that was done this year. You know, we're really trying to get, um, information out to parents publicly. Uh, you know, I, I asked the parents at that, that program of studies night. You know, how many of you know what A P is, or how many of you had A P in your high school? And everybody raised their hand. You know, everybody had A P or at least know what it is. And then I said, how many of you know what I B is and had I B in your high school? And nobody raised their hand. One or two people raised their hand. And, and, you know, so it's, it's a matter of, you know, getting that information out there. And we're working really hard this year to do that. Um, and we'll continue to do that, uh, you know, because we want to answer those questions. And we want parents to be able to make an informed choice. Um, you know, it, it, there's a lot of parents that will say, you know what, I loved A P, I think my kid's going to be good, better with A P. And that's okay, there's nothing wrong with that. A P is a great thing and we want to continue to push that as well. Uh, but we want them to, you know, if a student is, feels that they're, they, they might take I B, we don't want them to not do it because they don't know. Um, so it's really about getting that information out there. And, and I think we've done a good job with that so far this year and getting better with that. We're not there yet. We got to continue working at. And, uh, uh, but we're, we're going to continue to run these events, we're going to continue putting information in our newsletters, we're going to continue sending out robocalls. You know, and, and talking about all these great, uh, opportunities. You know, uh, you know, parents need to know about our new, the military science, they need to know about Ed Rising, they need to know about the new E M T course. Got all that information out there as much as we can, so.
I am just so, um, as a parent of former Fitch students. I am just so very appreciative of, um, the work that I B and A P, even though my kids did not take any of those courses. But I think that you just teach differently. Um, and I think you just get infused. And I'm just, as a board member, I'm just so honored and thrilled that you guys continue to. Um, educate us and keep us informed on the M Y P and I B. Um, because I could actually almost have those elevator pitches myself. Um, and I, I know, I know, and it's been a long time, um, to do that. But once again, the dedication that you guys have done, um, to, to really kind of bring, to breathe life into these programs. Um, and to carry it through as much, um, as much as you have. Thank you so much, um, for the, for you, for all of you. I do appreciate.
I would also say another key ingredient is the professional development. You mentioned going to D C, Karmita. Um, we've had the N I M C program, which is the military, because we're a D O D school. Um, we've been able to get free of charge E L A, math and science. And so that's intense summer programming, it's networking and, and teaching teachers all through the year. It's giving kids instant person-to-person tutoring. And we've gotten really positive feedback. So that's for the A P section, but that's really for all higher level. Teaching and learning. And so, and I B's always had that because of the different D O D grants that we've had, we've embedded it. So I only felt it was fair to get N I M C on board to help out with the A P. And that professional development, high qualified, highly qualified teachers are what promote. That accelerated learning for kids and meeting their needs. So I, I couldn't be chatter of that extra work that teachers have done. And that ongoing work, like you never stop, right? Because the next thing is going to happen. So I've told Kelly, we have to expand our circle of friends, of people being trained in I B. Um, certainly all my coordinators, you know, need to have I B training and maybe even teach an I B course. Um, and A P. I think a lot of them do A P and E C. So, um, I'd like to continue this journey and I'll continue to seek the grants so that we can have these journeys together. It's money well spent.
So the culinary program, is that, is that a future thought about it being in the career?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that's my little segue. Thank you for.
And it's only a restaurant away or someone that we can connect to in town. I mean, it's really doable.
So, um, to the board members present and on the screen, um, Susan was, um. Was, it was, we don't have Sam and Clint here tonight because they are, um, in a meeting with.
They finished.
Oh, they finished the meeting, um, uh, to look at the C I Ps. And the culinary, um, program has been zeroed out. Um, it will go to the town council zeroed out, but, um, the planning and zoning, um, the, the planning commission and, no. The public works, um, and, uh, John, um, Bert, the town manager, have zeroed out the program. However, his recommendation for us is that we are to give a presentation. Um, we talk about them with our C I Ps, April fifth, I think it is.
Yeah.
Um, where they go, they go through all C I Ps. And maybe, um, maybe it's time actually that part of the, our conversation about the culinary program. Is actually to, to take some talking points from you, Kathy, and from you, um, and around. Um, the career program and this also understanding about it being an I B, um, district. But I just wanted to let, uh, the board members know that, um, it's not necessarily dead in the water. Um, John Bert's thinking is, is that the $600,000 required for the culinary program is more than what a C I P. Should look like, um, but that he felt that we should bring it towards, um, the town council and then ultimately to the R T M as well. So just wanted to give you guys a hot off the press.
Continuing to forge ahead because we did the planning. Um, you know, when we were denied the planning through a C I P, we went ahead and did it ourselves. And, um, so, you know, we're kind of ready to go with that project once we get the funding for it.
Kim, what is, what does C I P stand for? What is C I P?
Uh, it's, uh.
Is it funding?
Uh, no, I know this.
Projects.
Projects.
Capital improvement. Thank you, Liz.
Capital Improvement Project.
So just wanted to, when they. The board note, but, um, that if we could, uh, make sure that we are prepared to have a. I have a talk about the culinary program and why we see it as an important, um, piece to our, um, education.
Did you want to speak at all? That's kind of the segue into the, um, the new additions to the. Um, proposal and the policy for graduation requirements. So by adding the extra world language credit, it brought us up from the twenty-six, which is the norm and the lowest expectation from the state. And pretty much everywhere else. Um, the Department of Defense has the twenty-six, um, number of credits. There were even some schools that our students might attend in Hawaii and other places that have twenty-two credits. So we have to realize that when students come to us, especially military, from port to port, there's a compact, a military compact. So we, it's essential that they are able to graduate and we have to make some accommodations sometimes. So we just have to put that in place. But is there anything you want to speak to, Kathy, about, um, the personal project? Um, as, uh, or, or Anne, um, as it relates to a graduation requirement?
So before you do that, let's just lay the land.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, a couple of, uh. Okay, so um a couple of uh meetings ago or maybe last week ago, we were talking about the policy around graduation requirements. Um, and we realized that we just didn't have a lot of information and so we actually tabled um the further graduation policy. Um, and then once again, Susan and I felt like these two topics kind of was a synergy. So, that's why we're talking about it because we had lots of questions about the graduation and I know Susan in her board notes had given us information and that we also heard from Miranda Chapman, who is our military liaison um had also given information. So, I just wanted to make sure that, I'm always making sure that we're all in the same room. Kinda. Alright, so you guys can continue.
Kim?
Liz?
Uh, I was wondering if um on your policy committee, Andrea, did you all talk about um increasing the social studies curriculum, uh credits from three to four or three and a half at least? Because.
Well. Isn't it? So they actually do have three and a half because they have the civics as well.
But it doesn't say that on your policy.
Well, it does say it in the policy that civics is required.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying the number. Because if it's only three credits, one and a half is already taken up by US history or whatever is considered a US history credit and a half a credit of civics. That leaves only one and a half credits for a plethora of all types of different I think personally, and I think there's a lot of people out there feel it's essential that our students know more about economics, government systems, sociology, psychology, these types of things are all social sciences.
So that's under the umbrella of humanities and they can certainly take those things. But I think the requirements is US history and a half credit of civic. Or AP government. And so that they can take, they probably are most likely taking at least three and a half credits because of that.
So I was asking.
I'm sorry, Liz, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Go ahead.
That's, I, I, I have asked that we look at putting it in policy. I know kids take a lot of different things. Been there, done that. I understand that. But what we don't have is a policy that says that shows that we support our kids in becoming valuable citizens within this global society. So I really would like, I've asked that we look at adding that, you know, make a statement, three and a half credits. Make it, you know, as part of the policy, 3.5, not, well, we get a half a credit here. Why is it that social studies is the only core requirement that is three credits? Whereas everything else, math, science and language is four. That's all I've asked. So I'm, I'm, I'm on my soapbox and I, I know that you're sitting there going, shut up Liz, but you know, I just really would like an answer. I understand about the military thing. But let's face it, I'm a military brat as well. We had just adapted, modified, overcome our obstacles.
So I would have to look to see what that total would be. I mean, if we put it in as three and a half, we would have to consider the civics as the half credit. And then would they be taking three other full courses? Does that happen at the high school?
Yeah, I think that um Liz, it's, first of all, they got the three tiers, uh three uh credits of uh social study. And then they have two additional humanities credits, okay, that uh considered. Um, it could be a language, it could be a social studies, uh and there's some art credit, uh courses that have been in there as well. Okay, so, so the, the question I have when it comes to this request is where is that credit coming from? Because you have students that are, if we have uh 27 credits and you want to increase the, the credit for social studies to, to four. So now what are they not taking? Because it has to come from something. And the you know, if, we want to make sure that our students have the opportunity to take other credits as well. Um, and they have that opportunity. If they're interested in this whole studies, they can take this whole study because it will fit within the graduation requirements they have under uh the humanities credit. It will also fit within some of the, the um, uh, the uh elective credits that they have as well. They have four other elective credit. The concern that I have, and I brought this uh to the, the policy committee as well, is that when we look at these graduation requirements, increasing a world language graduation requirement as we are, we are asking to do um is going to have some effect on how students are gonna be able to work their schedule. And now when we look at the, um, we have to look at how that's going to affect those things. If we make too many changes, I don't know what that will affect. I don't know how that will affect our numbers in our elective courses because less students are gonna be taking less elective credit. Um, and I think that's something that we need to consider. Um, because yes, you're absolutely right that right now it's at three credits and then they could take an additional um, four credits of electives and additional two credits of humanities. And most students will take that for, uh, that fourth year of social studies. Um, but with the change already in world language, I, I would be very careful about changing another.
Total number of credits.
Total number of credits and the total number of uh, uh, another requirement, knowing how that's going to pull from other class.
I understand what you're saying, Ted. I really see, I understand what you're saying. But what I'm, I'm, my whole, one of my passions is that I feel that our American society is lacking in a lot of this educational benefits that come out of social studies because we are the only core requirement that's diminished in, in importance. Because if it's not, if it's a core requirement, there's three core requirements that have four courses, I mean, four credits. And then there's the social studies, that's three. And it just doesn't, it's not equal. And I just feel that we're at a, a time, and I'm not asking for this next year. I'm asking for us to consider this to, to be the lighthouse, not be the people that are, you know, searching and grabbing, but to go and start to say we need to take a stand. And we need to, we need to support our kids and the development of the American student. And that's, that's my whole thing. I'm not asking for it next year. I think it does need study. I think it needs to, you know, but I really think we have an opportunity. And I think we need to look at it carefully. And I think it's, it's time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Liz. Uh, I think one of the reasons that the graduation requirements has taken so long to wind its way through the policy committee is because we've had a very robust discussion uh about the number of credits we should have, the distribution of credits that we should have. Uh, I argued very much that uh we might want to go to 28. But I must acknowledge that the uh metaphor of a snake swallowing an elephant uh reached me, that we are increasing the workload on students with the Capstone project and with the language project. And so we agreed, or at least it's my impression, we agreed that we would go from 26 to 27 this year. And uh Mr. Kelleher and Susan have indicated that we're gonna watch this very carefully. They'll be reporting back to the policy board. And that we're going to look at it, uh gee, I'd love to have 32 credits. To know a lot, but you know, you just laughed at me and you're right to laugh at me. Uh, it's not gonna happen all at once, but I, that what you're saying about doing it and taking it seriously, I assure you from at least my perspective that the policy committee is taking it very seriously. And uh, I hope you participate in this process as we move forward, Liz.
And I think the best way to do that, Liz, is to collect data. I was just saying to Carmita, it'd be interesting to see how many of our kids are actually doing that three and a half because of the half-credit civic. So, let me look into the data, but I think what Matthew said is spot on, that we're moving it up that credit this year, but we will continue to bring it back to the board's attention. But let me gather some data for you to see, actually, what are our students doing? We're seeing you, you know, by their senior year when they're ready to graduate. Um, kind of similar to what Ted did when he looked at the total number of credits where um it looks like um, the majority of our kids are taking between 30 and 31 credits. When, before they graduate, the majority of our kids, the largest number. So we really have a sliding scale. There's a handful of students who are getting um just the 26 to 27 credits, um like 25 out of the class of 330 or 3 something. So I was really proud to see what our kids are actually doing because they're actually doing what you espouse for them to do. But we want all of our students to be able to graduate, right? We don't want fewer kids graduating than we already have. We want our kids to graduate. So I think if we can look at this as a work in progress and continue to gather the data for the board so that you can see what we're seeing, I think it'll, you know, keep our eyes open to this. So with this policy, we're adding a full credit, so it'll be 27 credits. We're adding a second credit for um the world language and this personal project is a, a credit that will count for students. So, um, there's some new things happening for the incoming freshmen.
The personal project is, is actually replacing what we used to be called the Mastery-Based Diploma Assessment. Um, which was simply a class that, I think the personal project becomes that.
Bev?
Thank you, Kim. Um, this could be really under future meeting topics, but what, what would really help me is to know exactly what colleges are looking for. So maybe we can get the guidance counselors into a COW meeting and they can tell us take a sample of colleges, take Brown, UConn, Three Rivers, wherever you want to take, and let's have a discussion about what colleges are looking for. And that would help me to determine how many credits our high school kids really need.
So Bev, I think that, that actually is something that uh we include in our program of studies, I believe it is.
Yeah, it's the, the student manual.
Right, and at our, and at our, in our student handbook, where we actually talk about, here's the credits that you have to take in order to graduate from Fitch High School. But if you're interested in going to a, a college or university, uh it's under college planning admission. So I'd be happy to share that with the board. Um, that it says, um, that, for example, for example is, it says, yeah, you're required to take three credits of social studies, but four credits are strongly recommended if you want to go to college. Um, so if uh, you know, they, they want to make sure that we are, are telling them, that's what the Connecticut University system and uh other colleges could be even more. So we want to make sure that our students know uh what's actually asked for for college.
Good find.
Yeah, I like to have that discussion though with the guidance counselors if you don't mind.
Absolutely. No, not a problem at all.
Um, and we have Kate Cerio. Um, I don't know Kate, if you want to talk about your role in making, assessing the children, all of our students with the SEAL of Bili literacy and, you know, what you're learning from that.
Sure.
So Kate, hi, it's so good to see you again. Thank you for coming um by Zoom. Um, but could you, could you help um me understand, um, what is a SEAL by literacy? What does that mean?
Um, sure.
Thank you. And before, definitely, do you have another question? Okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss you, Bev.
Alright, so. Thank you. Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. Um, so I'm coordinating the SEAL by literacy for Fitch High School students. And this year we are testing juniors and seniors um on Thursday, as a matter of fact, in um many different languages um with the intention of awarding the SEAL of Bili literacy. It is an actual seal sticker that goes on their diploma and a note of, a notation on their transcript that says that they have achieved a certain level of proficiency in a language other than English. So this year, we have students testing in, I have 30 students signed up to test in Spanish. I have 16 ASL students, um four Latin students, German, Vietnamese, Ger- um French and Hindi and Czech each have one student testing in those languages. And so proficiency in the language refers to what the students can do in the real world with that language. What they can do in the language, not what they know about the language, but rather what they can, how they can use it in a meaningful context. So this test is computer-generated, um and there is uh, you know, a real person um on the computer screen that prompts the students to answer questions and complete tasks in the four skills of language, reading, speaking, writing and listening. And the students work their way through um and strive to um achieve the intermediate level of proficiency. And I can give you an example of what um intermediate, mid looks like. So for example, when speaking, um, students are able to speak in order to meet their, their needs. Um, they can exchange preferences and opinions in conversation based on familiar topics. And for example, they can talk about shopping. They can talk about ordering at a restaurant. Um, they can talk, um introduce themselves to new people and meet new people. They can talk about their opinions on movies and school and their classes. Um, they can discuss sports and maybe some um current events that they have been exposed to in their classes. Um, and our heritage learners are a special group that um get to test for the SEAL. Um, they don't have to be in a class, enrolled in a class. There's no seat time required for our heritage learners. And so this is really um a test that points to, you know, their own cultural identity and their, their home language and where they come from. And it's an affirmation for them. Um, and it's seen as, you know, as an extra asset, uh that they have this um, this language that they are proficient in. Um, so that is an overview of the, of the SEAL. I'll stop here to see if there are any questions. Um, I know I, I spoke kind of quickly.
You did fine, Kate. Thank you. Are there questions for the board?
Um, Kim, I have a question.
Yes, Rita.
Or Kate, Kate?
Hi, Rita.
Could you explain to me a little bit about um the students taking the exams in German? Um, are they German-speaking and, and because I know we don't offer German and Latin? Um, only four students, is it because Latin is being phased out? Or are there normally more or fewer students taking Latin exams?
I believe that it is. It is, it, it is, um, I believe that the, the low number of Latin students testing this year is a direct result of cutting the Latin programming. Uh, the in, individual numbers of, you know, the, the German, the French, the Vietnamese. Um, these are all home language speakers. Uh, I will be testing students that have taken the highest level of Spanish and French, which for Spanish is four and French is level three, um but not for a few weeks. Um, these are all heritage learners that I'm speaking about.
When my students were there, they had actually Spanish five and French five. So I, um, yes, it's, it's.
We're looking to grow it back again, Rita. And I think the number of students at that high level of Latin had diminished. That's why there's so few still there because they had already.
But again, the way you're promoting the IB, it'd be great if you promoted the languages too. And we used to have the five years of Spanish and French.
So I was, I was going to tie into that point.
Yeah.
Um, the, the, um, the career programs and the SEAL of Bili literacy are very complimentary in that um, once you attain the SEAL of Bili literacy, there's something called the Global SEAL. And this will be particularly important for our students who are um going directly into the workforce because the Global SEAL is a credential uh with a serial number that goes directly on their resume. And so when they go to LinkedIn or Monster and employers the same, they can look up who, you know, who has the Global SEAL and it will link them to a detailed report on the scores that they've received on the SEAL by literacy, which could say something like, oh, you know, this person would be really great at writing an email in the target language, or this person could answer the phone in the target language. So that would be a really. Or this person could answer the phone in the target language, so that would be a really important um, you know, credential for students to, to achieve who are going directly into the workforce.
That's, that sounds wonderful, yeah, that sounds great. But I, I do hope we um, bring back some of the languages that, you know, the advanced languages especially. Because you can take Spanish one and even Spanish two in middle school, so when you get
And I think, I think I have an idea for that too, I mean, I think that we should um, we should celebrate the kids that earn the seal and, and throw them a big party. Say, what would you like to do to celebrate this achievement? And that way it would create some momentum for underclassmen to see, wow, this is like the hottest ticket in town, I need to have one, I need to be there. I want to, you know, I, I want to be part of this, and I feel like, you know, we're, we're almost there.
Yeah.
I think also showing that this can be credit towards college is another big
This is another huge incentive that, you know, Southern Connecticut State University offers um, nine credits and which is halfway to a minor if you come in with the seal of by literacy in several languages, Chinese, Spanish, French, German, um, multiple languages and even medical Spanish. So, I mean, think about the opportunities for kids that, that could, you know, maybe even double major um, at, at college and then uh, go into translation or um, you know, have a side job at, you know, doing some kind of translation in a hospital or some healthcare setting, for example.
It's wonderful, thank you.
Matthew.
Welcome.
Matthew, you're gonna have to speak closer to your mic.
Okay, is that any better?
That's perfect.
Well, good, I love shouting. Um, I just lost my, my images of you guys. Uh, I am curious, the seal of literacy, my, the question that runs through my mind is compared to what? Does this look, is this kind of like the foreign service that ranks you from one to five with five being a native speaker and one being a bear, is this like a three on a foreign service rating or is there some equivalence that we can see?
Yes, I sent out a um, I sent out some information and um, I sent it to, to Susan and to, I think, one other person this afternoon. And so there's a brochure linked there that says the, um, the rating scale and what you need to, in order to pass the test, so um, the uh, test measurement that we're using um, i- is an intermediate three in all four domains. Which means that they
Thank you, thanks, that's wonderful. Uh, may, may I offer for administration that as we, as we promote this program, we communicate in the promotion that the, getting the seal of literacy is not just a test, it is a nationally rated standard.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, there's a lot of things I think that we could do a much better job. Um, I think that for so long, Groton School District was not seen as the, this, um, the gem that it is, and I think it really is.
I'm lowering my hand.
So the seal of by literacy is related to the I B programming, how?
So
For me.
So if the student takes the seal of by literacy test or rather if the student takes in their second year of the um, language acquisition course in the diploma program for I B, if the student takes the exam, the I B exam and scores a four or higher, then they automatically are granted the seal of by literacy. The issue is, is that the scores for the I B exams do not come out until July. So when we test juniors, uh, for example, I have an ab initio course right now which has um, nine juniors, uh, eight juniors and one senior, and so I am testing my juniors in a few weeks in the seal of by literacy. It's a two-year course, I don't know if any of them are they're, some of them are right on the cost, I believe, of achieving um, the intermediate mid level um, in the listening and reading skills. But those speaking and writing skills really are going to need another year. So I'm looking at it as a benchmark, a place to say, this is where you are and where you need to go by the time you take the I B exam. Some kids may pass, um, but I don't expect all of them to. So it's a little tricky.
Teachers.
It's really good. Exactly, it's really good for that.
I think also the connection to, it's, it's more the connection to just the seal of by literacy, it's really about a connection of language acquisition. And that the I B and N Y P programs require students to have two years of language acquisition. Um, when they are doing uh, the uh, the I B career programming, when Anne was talking about the language acquisitions is part of that, they need to be involved with that, uh, same thing with the diploma program. So it's something where, you know, as we think about that international uh, mindfulness. Um, the, the language acquisition is a big part of that, that's why we've asked for the second year of world language uh, to be a, a, a change in the, the diploma. Uh, we want more students to be taking their languages the second year at the high school. We want, and that's going to lead to more students continuing with the language, will lead to more students taking the seal of by literacy and be prepared for that, more students being able to be part of the, the career program or the diploma program, or just take I B courses. So it's uh, it's, it's, it's more just that, that it's the seal, it's the language acquisition piece as a whole.
And what's really great about this experience is that it really puts the real world into the classroom, the real world is the classroom. And the things that the kids are doing in the classroom are preparing them for the real world, but when they take this proficiency test, this is as close to the real world as it gets.
Kate, did you say that there's thirty one kids that you are testing for um, American Sign Language?
There are sixteen students testing in A S L.
Okay, you have sixteen students who are testing for bi- seal of by literacy in A S L.
Yes, and it's a brand new test, it's the first time ever.
Thing in the whole wide world.
This is something that's just done in the last four or five years.
So the A S L this year is the first year that they're offering it, they don't even have the productive section of the test ready, the, these students are testing in the receptive section of the test. And then when the reproductive comes out in a month, they're going to sit for that as well.
Bravo.
Yes, it's very exciting.
Outside of the T H H, you're making me want to be a high school student again.
Well, I think Kate is, Kate has taken this on the last couple of years and has really grown this program, uh, the last few years. More students know about it, more students are getting involved with it. Um, and you really, you know, there's, there's no downside to students taking these assessments. And, and Kate has really, uh, you know, made sure that students know this, about this opportunity and we've had, this has done nothing but grow exponentially over the last two years. So she's done a wonderful job and, you know, I doubt she's just really excited about it every, every year, so it's
And there's this readiness component too, where they're taking an Apple speaking test through middle, they're going to be doing it through middle school and high school, we've actually gone down to the sixth grade, to the fifth graders to find out if there's native speakers in fifth grade that could possibly pass this Apple speaking test. That'll give us a lot of information going forward in middle school and high school to get them ready. So there's a lot of readiness work, I know Leah Kennedy's been instrumental as our, you know, um, you know, service provider, our staff developer, um, in working with Kate too, in making sure that we've got all of our dots connected to this big puzzle.
And since we've been doing the um, seal of by literacy, Lisa Dragoli did a pilot in two thousand eighteen. There were twelve awarded in two thousand nineteen, twenty five seals awarded. In two thousand twenty, twenty five seals awarded remotely. Two thousand twenty one, uh, hybrid year, that there were twenty seven seals awarded. And then last year, there were thirty one seals awarded. This year, I'm hoping that we, you know, top that and then some.
That's called progress. Thank you Kate.
Are there any, um, no, excuse me, Crowe, do, what are, what are our questions left for the um, graduation requirements as um, our policy people are hopefully, taking copious notes about how to um, do the, do our graduation credits. What other information do we need to have? Is there other, other, other information from our other admins from the high school? I don't know if people can see that you're there.
It's been a lot of work, but it's been a lot of good discussion too.
Yeah, it has. The labor of love. For sure.
Alright. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you colleagues for joining us, I really appreciate it, do, you have one more thing, Matthew?
I do, i- if it's the appropriate time, I had uh, sent an email earlier today to Susan about adding another agenda item for this evening that would require a board approval, majority board approval, is this the appropriate time to, to propose that?
Um, well, Matthew, you and I um, had a chat on email about that, yes, so um, yeah, you could, you could have done it earlier, but you could do that now, it is a standard meeting, so you can add an agenda item. Um, and what is your, distinctly, what is your agenda item?
The agenda item is that the communication committee as part of our work uh, has been interested in the possibility of working with the P T Os or at least uh, having a meeting with the P T Os and booster clubs to discuss ways that we can support their common mission of providing, uh, enhancing supplemental enhancement activities for our students. Um, it was suggested to me that rather than our going ahead and just simply doing that as a committee, that we come to the board, share this with them, get feedback and based on the board's willingness, move ahead or not.
So Matthew, can I ask, is there not a reason why we couldn't put that on next week's um, committee as a whole?
That would be fine.
Okay, so if you could just make sure that I had the language correctly, Susan and I will be meeting um, this week to put, to put together the agenda.
Very happy to do so.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you, I'm sort of losing speed, so, um, and also it's like pouring down rain, we have lots of people in this room that I kind of want to be able to get home. Early. I have a motion for adjournments.
Um, wait a minute, I, I would like, don't we have to, besides Matthews, I have a request for a C O W. Isn't this the time to do it?
Well, it's not on our agenda, but absolutely you can either email me or you can give that to me right now.
Yes, I would like to have a discussion about the reading program, that's, you know, been
Yes, it's, it's gonna happen, so I, I think Susan put it in the board notes. Is, uh, we just wanted to make sure that we had, she had, um, people um, available and ready to kind of talk about the reading program that exists in Groton. Um, I had mentioned that last week, or last time in our regular meeting that we were going to have that, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely. Needs to happen. Motion to adjourn. I have a second from William.
Third, fourth.
Alright, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Nice, safe travels.
Hey Rita. Hi Mark.
I did.
You know what?
Have a good night.